This conference will now be recorded.
Are you ready, Alicia?
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
You should be all set.
Joanne, do you want to take a roll call and make sure you got everybody?
I have everybody so far.
Okay.
Just a couple people, but their names will show up soon.
We've got Steve. We don't have Jeremy?
Not so far. Jeremy, are you out there?
I don't see him on the list.
No.
Okay, so we will open the meeting at 5:31. And first, Michelle, do you have anything to report for Kevin?
No, everything's status quo. If you read the report, you saw there was a bit of activity, and that's all that's going on.
Okay, does anyone have any questions they want? Michelle, Kevin's been on vacation. He'll be back tomorrow.
Right.
Okay, Terry Jones?
Hi, everybody. I emailed you all a copy of the report on Friday. I wanted to make note of the fall brush pickup, which will be scheduled for the week of October 13th, which is the day after Columbus Day. Usually takes two days. We go by once, pick up the brush, and once we've gone by, we're gone. So hopefully, everybody can get everything out on that Sunday or Monday before. And then, once we're done with that, we'll roll right into leaf pickup. I can't believe summer's almost over already, but it is. So here we are. I also, I've had a couple of people interested in the long sections of the floating dock behind the monument. Our plan was to pull those out and either scrap them out for scrap metal, but there seems to be some interest in them as far as maybe some contractors or some local residents wanting them to cut the skags off and use them as just a regular floating dock. So I guess my question to the board is, do you think it would be a good idea to advertise these maybe for a couple of weeks and take some bids on it and give the people, residents, contractors, an opportunity to buy them? And if they want them, they can take them off our hands, and that'll be one that less work that we would have to do.
I'm okay with it, Terry, if you think it's the right thing to do. What about the rest of you?
I think it's fine.
I would agree, yes.
I think it'd be a fantastic idea.
And I do too.
Probably not about TI sun. We're gonna put it in the TI sun, right?
Yeah, I will get the measurements of the dock and get with Joanne, and then we can run it in the TI sun for a couple of weeks, and then we'll take the highest bidder. You know, there's five sections there, four long sections, and of course, the dogleg section. But anyone that we can sell and make some money off is one less that we have to deal with and a little money in the general fund, I believe, for the village.
We could put it on the webpage too, Joanne, when you get the information.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, what else you got, Terry?
I did note that Sam Matt did a great and outstanding job this summer all by himself down there at Rotary Park. He wants to come back next year. And of course, I told him we definitely would love to have him back. A lot of, he told me we had a lot of compliments, and I know we've discussed this in other board meetings, a lot of compliments about the cleanliness of those bathrooms down there. So kudos to our crew, our DPW crew, and also Sam. It was for being kind of a messed up year, I think it went rather well down there, so.
And I think they were pretty, I stopped down to see him, I think, on the Sunday of Labor Day weekend, but I missed him. Maybe, I don't know what time I was down there, but, because I wanted to thank him for sticking with us. That's good.
Yeah, he took Monday, he took that Sunday off, Norma, and I had him on Labor Day, so he worked that following Monday on Labor Day.
Okay, well, I missed him, but I'll drop him a note. No, that was great. It worked out fine. So what else you got? You want to talk about your truck?
Sure. I did send an email to all of you. There is money in our CHIPS funding for paving or a pickup truck. Mine's getting rather rusted out as most residents, and the board has noticed. We can get a truck paid for through our CHIPS funding, but we have to purchase it with a plow, and it has to be a three-quarter ton or a one-ton. I know I did mention in the email of possibly buying two trucks, we have enough money to purchase two trucks, but on the conservative side, if the board would just like to get one truck for now and then save any rollover money for paving in the future, that's, you know, that's another idea. But to buy, to get this, we have to buy the truck with the plow included.
Did you get Tina's email that came, I got it at the boat museum just before I left? She had talked to Lisa Combs, the CHIPS coordinator for our region.
Yes.
So you might want to take a look at that.
Yeah, I did, I did read it. It's kind of what you and I discussed earlier today. Basically saying the same thing, and there is, like I said, there is money there. And we can get with Tina and talk with Alicia and see what's the best interest, at least getting a truck for, at least me, or getting a new truck for the DPW, and I take one of the other trucks.
Oh, okay. Now, if you put a plow on the truck that you're gonna have, is that gonna work for the union to have you out there with one on?
Well, I, well, the only, the thing is, Norma, I probably won't use it, but if it, we have a breakdown of another truck, we have that truck for backup.
Oh, okay.
But we purchased the truck with, we can't get reimbursed if it doesn't have a plow on it.
I get you.
We buy it with a plow, and we, you know, a plow breaks down, we have, they can use my truck. So that's kind of why I did suggest buying two trucks. But then I got thinking, you know, I'm more on the conservative side of it, you know, one truck, and then in the future, if we feel we need another truck, well, the money should be there to do that then.
And we've had a little discussion about the village plows, the fire department. That's part of our, it's not anything in writing, I think, we plow the fire department, and on the town tax bill, there's a line item for the fire department that we all pay, but we don't get reimbursed to plow it. So I guess I'm just wondering how this is going, why do we do it for nothing?
You know, Norma, it's one of those things that have gone from generation of DPW workers to generation. When we plowed it, when, obviously, when we were at the municipal building or when the fire department at the municipal building. As they moved, we just carried on that same tradition. You know, if, if we couldn't get to it, Bob Bolton or the town might have done it periodically, but most, nine times out of 10, it was my, our village crew that did it. And basically, I guess the only logical answer I can give you is it was right along the beat of Grave Street, and we plowed that. So to take a couple of passes around the fire hall to make sure it's cleaned out for the fire trucks, I guess, was kind of what it, what started it. And then it just became, you know, something of the nature of us just cleaning it up. I know the town plows. You sure?
I think that since the fire department serves the village, it's not a big deal, I mean, time-wise, I know it's a big deal for you guys, but in terms of what we get in return, I think it's, you know, money or no money, I think it's worth it.
Yeah, yeah. We've all worked together, the fire department, the DPW, and the Town Highway have all worked together. You know, there's issues, whenever we've had an issue with a sander breaking down, they've allowed us to use their tanker truck to flush the sand out, to get the sander empty, so we can repair it. Other, if we didn't do that, we'd have to shovel it all out by hand. So, you know, one hand washes the other. It's something that's happened. I know, unfortunately, as time goes by, everything's about money today. It just seems to be that way, and it's unfortunate that the good old boy days are slowly going away. But, you know, plowing it between 7:00 and 3:30, I think the main issue here is about the overtime. And we were, you know, when we'd come in at 4:00 in the morning, we'd plow it. When we came in at 5:30 or 6:00 at night, you know, we plowed it. But I think that's what started this whole thing, because obviously, the DPW is going to be shorthanded this winter. We went from a seven-man crew to a five-man crew. So there was always somebody to pick from with the pickup trucks. Now there's only one guy in a pickup truck, and that's if somebody isn't sick. So I think that's what brought this whole thing to light.
Okay. So Terry, why don't you put together some figures with what you think, or maybe you've already done it, the cost of the truck with the plow and how the money's gonna shake out with CHIPS? Because we can't plan on pave New York or the winter recovery, I don't think.
No, no, and I did use the winter recovery money for the bridge that, you know, has been used, and chances are, we probably won't get in another allotment next year. We've been lucky enough to get it for three years in a row.
Oh, good.
Wouldn't surprise, so, but we did use that money, so they can't take that 20%.
Okay. So what's the board want to do?
Are you referencing the, I'm sorry, the truck or the fire department?
If it's for the truck, I agree with the truck. And if it's for the fire department, I think we should continue to take care of it because it's the fire department, and if they need to get out, I need somebody to take care of my house, so.
I can't argue with either of those. I believe, he's been asking for a truck for such a long time. And I feel as though the DPW needs it as well as deserves it. And as far as cleaning the fire department, I have no problem with that either.
Anybody else? You're gonna get one or two?
I agree with everything. I think they should have their trucks, and I think the fire department needs to be cleaned out.
If we, if we got in a pinch time-wise, the town would take care of it, right?
Yeah, and have.
Okay. I think we should keep things as they were. The fire department helps us out by helping the disabled sander out and whatnot. So I, what little bit of money we'd save by not doing it, it wouldn't be worth causing the problem.
So what did we come up with, one or two?
I think Terry should put the numbers together and see which is the better way for him to go, unless you needed, but I think he had put the numbers together back in March, and I think that was, what, $70,000, Terry?
Actually, I think the truck that I had picked out was a three-quarter ton, and I believe that was an extended cabin. I think it was 44, 45 thousand.
Okay, no, I think you're correct. So I think if you put that together and find out what the two trucks and...
What's the lead time on one, Terry? Is that a long time?
I think the last time it was six to eight weeks. It's hard telling now with the COVID. I don't know, you know, how they've been doing as far as building trucks. So that'd be a question for the dealer, and I can get those, I can get those answers.
Yeah, that'd be great. Have you got anything else, Terry?
I believe that's all that I have right now.
Does anyone have any questions for Terry? If not, we'll move right along to Matt Cooper.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, we're fine, Matt.
All right, I emailed a summary update. I hope that was distributed to everyone. So I'll run down that on the wastewater projects. So the first one, I summarize on that sheet is the wastewater project, which I've combined both the original portion and the ready portion in the same summary here. So if you look at the first bullet for design, you'll see that there is a little bit of change in the dates and the schedule. The first four bullets are pushed back about two months each. So completing the plans and specs, the bidding, awarding contracts, and construction start are all pushed back two months. We've had some, some challenges coordinating the original scope of the project with ready and making it okay with the ready commission, making sure it meets all the requirements with the flood elevations, and also coordinating all that work with some of the electrical work that the DOT, it was part of the DOT project down at the pump station as well. So there's just been some extra coordination there, some extra agencies to have involved, and it's slowed things up a little bit here. However, what I did do on that schedule is hold the construction completion date. What it was the last time I presented this to you, which I'm still showing is June 2022. I don't think losing two months of start of construction in the middle of winter is really gonna slow up our progress. Quite honestly, I wouldn't expect much activity to happen then anyway. It would be mostly the contractor getting shop drawings submitted, stuff like that. So I don't feel in the long run, it'll hold up the completion of the project. But again, these dates are just my best guess at it. Until we get, you know, contractors in hand and all of that, we won't know exactly what we are looking at for a final completion. But this is my best guess to date. Moving down, the next bullet is funding. All of those figures should look familiar to you. This is everything from the previous update. All of our grant and loan amounts are unchanged since the last update. You know, the only thing still up in the air at this point is whether or not we would want to resubmit on a WQIP grant. That is part of the CFA process. And so far in 2020, there have been no CFA, so I'm not sure if that's one we'll even have to decide on. It might be decided for us, that simply there is no grant round this year for that program.
Matt, if we apply for that and got it, then it could change what the funding is that we already have, right?
Correct. It will affect your other grants. So we've got to kind of look as to whether or not it makes sense, because if we get additional grants, the WIA is reduced because it can't be any more than 25% of the project cost after you've subtracted out other grants. So that one will definitely drop. And then rural development, it's not quite as cut and dry with them. We'd have to approach them to see if they would pull their grant. So, you know, we'd want to make sure that we're not wasting our time applying for it. If rural development says, well, if you get a million from them, we're gonna pull a million of ours. So we need to have that conversation with them to see if it even makes sense. But if it's possible for us to pile on more grants and not lose the ones we have, certainly anything we can do to lower the end cost to the village, we're going to pursue it.
So Matt, you're gonna work with the other funding agencies and see what they think?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. The next bullet on here is permits. We're still working on the modified speedies permit. The comment period is over, and I think there's just a few loose ends left, I think, until DEC is ready to issue that permit, unless Megan has heard anything more recent on that.
I haven't heard anything, any updates as far as how long they think they're gonna take to review it and either accept comments and implement them, I've heard.
Okay. And then the last item I have under the wastewater project is an action item for the board. It's an amendment to the Barton and Judas Engineering Agreement. And I sent a draft of that over last week. Really, all that is, is moving some of the fee amount from one line item of one of our services to another one of our services. It does not change our total contract at all. When we put this agreement together, there's a list of our services that we bill hourly. We do our best guess when we start this project to have the right amount allocated to each one of those services. However, as time goes on, we see that, you know, we overestimated some and underestimated the rest or others. In this case, we're just moving $15,000 out of the permit because I think we're pretty close to resolving that one with DEC and moving it into funding assistance because we're already starting to hit the ceiling on what we had estimated for funding assistance. Now that we've got a lot of different funding agencies in the game, it's just been a little more work to coordinate with all of them, so. And again, these are hourly services, so if there's any unused money on those, it's not going to be an L. It's, you know, whatever we actually perform is what we get paid. And if we overestimated these, in the end, it's paid to us, so.
Okay. Do you have a warm, fuzzy feeling about FEMA? God, I, if we'll ever get them on board with us.
Oh, on, on the shoreline work?
Yeah.
I don't have a good sense of that of late. I've tasked Chuck White and John Candino with following through on that one, and I'll have to follow up with them too.
I mean, there's so much devastation out West, FEMA has got time to worry about us.
Yeah, I don't have a good handle on that today, but I can, I can get back to you on that.
Okay.
So the last, last item on my update is just a brief mention of the INI study. We have a draft report on that that identifies, you know, the sources of inflow and infiltration into your sewer system and what some options are to remedy that. We've started, we started working with Development Authority this week and getting their input on it. And hopefully, by the end of the week, we will have a complete report that we can submit to DEC and also have to the funding agency to at least get it on their list this year. We will have to make sure we further vet that with the village, and we'll have opportunities to modify that and tweak that if necessary. It's just that a week from today is the deadline to make 2020 to 2021 funding list with the FC. So we at least want to get it on their list, knowing that we can still make some minor modifications to that after the fact, which, you know, we definitely want to get the villagers' input on what type of projects you definitely want to pursue or not pursue to address the INI. There'll certainly be some cost-benefit conversations to be had to, you know, if you're gonna spend X number of dollars, how much INI is that really gonna get out of the system? And how much is that really gonna benefit you? So we'll have those conversations in detail here in the weeks to come. So that's all I have for tonight, and I will circle back to the one action item, and that's Barton and Judas Engineering Amendment Number Three. Any questions or concerns about that?
No, I think we need to have a motion though, so I can sign this amendment. Please, would somebody make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Michelle and Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'll stop in, Joanne, so we can sign this and get it back to Matt.
Okay.
Well, thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, Ms. Megan?
Good evening. Just got a couple quick updates. At the water plant, at the end of last week and this week, we got our lagoon cleaned out, which has kind of been on the to-do list for quite a while. The DPW and the town folks helped with that, but they got quite a lot out, and it's looking really good. The guys sent me some pictures when they were working on it last week. So it'll all be good for another several years before we gotta worry about that again. Last week or the week before was, now it's two weeks now, we completed the silica training that was required by PESH to get us in compliance at the water plant. We had been waiting for him to be able to come down and do it, but with COVID going on, we finally decided that it's just gonna be easier if you send us the information, and we'll review it and get it taken care of. He was happy with it. He was happy with the plan, so he's checked us off as far as being up to snuff with our silica exposure plan. So that was a really positive thing to get out of the way. Also, with our system, we completed our lead and copper sampling in the system. They were the 10 samples. It's where homeowners assisted us with collecting samples, and we got them sent out to Converse Labs for analysis. We've received most of the reports. We're still waiting on the last few to trickle in, but we were able to successfully get the 10 that we required done, which is always, sometimes can be difficult when you're trying to coordinate with homeowners. Everybody was really cooperative. I was excited to get that completed. Everything at the wastewater plant's been business as usual. Nothing too exciting happening there. Did you guys have any questions for me?
I don't. Anybody else? No. Y'all good, Megan?
Thanks a lot. Yep, thank you.
Okay, moving right along to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on one, two, three, and four? If not, can we have a motion to accept the consent agenda? I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Michelle, okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, that's carried. The capital projects. If you look on the very top there, the bond council got the water project, $7.7 million. That was what that was all about, to get that going. And Tina's been working to get that all closed out, so that'll be a good thing to have behind us. Are there any questions on any of the other items? If not, can I have a motion for item five?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second for Nancy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone, okay, anyone opposed? Okay, we're good. Oh, new business. You all got a copy of EFPR's engagement letter? So we need to get that signed. I think we want to keep in mind that it's the same price that we had, but we're getting our payroll done, which takes our payroll people off that we had before that was over $5,000, so that's a good thing. And we use their accounts payable software. That's in our system now, so that's really helpful. So if no one has any issues or questions, can we have a motion to sign that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Jeremy made the motion. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Michelle. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Right. Anyone opposed? Okay. Municipal Solutions Agreement. We have the agreement with them. It's good for two years. We got another year on it. But the disclosure filings that we have to do, that has expired. So we need to renew that. Each filing has a $225 fee attached to it. But that's what they have to work with. So if somebody would make that motion, so we can get that going.
I'll make that motion.
Nancy? Okay, a second from, second, Michelle?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Joanne.
Okay, I'm just basically gonna need a motion to approve for me to send in a ad for the request for bids for sewage sludge removal. I did send this on to Megan for her to take a look at it, and she said it looked good to her. So I sent it in the packet, so you should have had time to read it. And all I need is a motion to approve in a second.
Would someone make the motion?
Michelle will make a motion.
Michelle, and a second?
I'll second it.
From Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, good. Okay, Alicia, do you wanna talk about this human resource deal, or do you want me to? What are we doing? We gotta get you people to sign up to take these courses that state mandated. And the CPR training, we've paid for that. So the ones that have signed up for that, we can't get our money back, and we need to get these things done. Do you have the list right there, Joanne? Who needs, on the board that needs to do, love to do the workplace violence and sexual harassment?
I don't think Joanne has the list. I've been checking it. The only board member that's completed it, that I have paperwork for so far as you, and then as far as CPR training, I haven't had anyone turn in their certificate completing the training out of the DPW and Water Sewer Department employees who opted to take the training.
Okay, I'll get ahold of Terry in the morning, and Megan, and they're just gonna have to push these guys out to get it done. We're not spending the money.
I'm here, I'm still here, Norma. We did the workplace violence, but we haven't done the CPR.
Yeah, I know, and we paid for that. So we gotta get her done.
I believe we're in the same...
All right, I wasn't aware.
Oh, go on, Terry, sorry.
Were there some issues about downloading that link or something?
I haven't had any questions from the DPW regarding the CPR class. Megan had sent me a question from Eric, and I responded to her question, advising them that. I think that they thought if they clicked the button, they were gonna have to pay for something, but it's already paid for. They just need to click the button, and they're gonna start their training.
Okay, all right. I will, the one, the emails that I don't have, Alicia, I will give, I will get for you, so you can send those links to them. I believe I do have that link. I just haven't done it, but I will get on it.
I think I had sent it to everyone except for maybe, I think I might have only been missing one person or so with an email address from you, Terry. But I can go and dig up that email and resend it to you of who I was missing, if that's helpful.
Yep, okay, we'll do that. We'll get, we'll get right on as quick as we can.
Well, that'd be great, Terry. Thanks. We got a notice from NICOM that we're gonna have to do, develop a pandemic operation plan. And Kevin got his information to get the police department plan together. We got until April of 2021 on both of them, but they're just two things for us to have to take a look at and get working on, because it's mandated by the state. So we'll have to get them done. The Blood Bank will be here the 30th. And has anybody given any thought about people being able to use the municipal building? Some of these people that didn't use it this summer could do things outside. Now it's getting near winter, and they're kind of in a bind to find a place to go. The last call I had was from Lori Arna. She has between six and 14 people that do chair yoga, and she'd like to use the building for one hour once a week. But I think we'll start getting calls from TOPPS and probably Rotary Club and World Shoes and Maja. So I don't know if...
I think, sorry, sorry to interrupt you, Norma. If we decide to let people use the building, then we, you know, we may need to start charging, because DPW's gonna have to go in and clean up after them after every time. And, and maybe we just bite the cost of that, but it's something that's gonna have to be sanitized after every group goes in and out. So I think that's something to discuss. It's not just, sure, come in and use the building and not sanitize it.
Okay, so we'll have to come up with it. I wonder if Terry could give us, are you still on, Terry?
Yeah, yes, I'm still here.
Oh, what do you think it would cost to sanitize that village hall when somebody uses it?
Well, I know that Jeremy Janis charges $100, I believe, every time he does the town barn. I may be mistaken. That's probably more Alicia knows the answer to that, but I know when he comes in or was coming in, I think that's what we were paying.
Because also...
$200 a time for the highway barn. It's 200 for the highway barn, I think. You know what? No, it's 100. You're correct, because he's putting the town hall bill on there, too. It's $100 for the highway.
Okay.
But we would have to do bathrooms along with, you know, I would think you should do the chairs, et cetera, et cetera, and tables. So it may be a little bit more intensive.
If I can, if I can interrupt here, I have had the Majah ladies come in and ask me, and I've been telling everyone that not this, not this year, hopefully next year due to the COVID. So personally, I think it's just more, it's taken more of a chance of me getting sick. And if I get sick, which I was today, I don't know what we'll do, because I'm the only one in there. And I...
Joanne, I think you're on to something, and I don't think it's just about you getting sick. If we have groups coming in, even with masks, there's more of a chance of them contaminating. If one person is sick, they can contaminate that whole group who's gonna go home and contaminate other people. And you all know the drill. And so I'm a little reluctant to open up the building to them when we're reluctant to use it ourselves.
Well, are we gonna change our mind on that and start having board meetings? Other boards are doing it. I don't know. We said we would put it off until September. Take another look at it. So I don't know if you wanna continue to do this or what you wanna do.
Well, my thoughts in reference to us meeting as a board, I think it's important, yes, that we get back to doing this in person, but I also think that we need to provide access to the public, so that when you have the public says, I don't wanna show up, but I still wanna see your board meeting, et cetera, et cetera. And this is, as we've all heard this over and over and over again, this is completely new territory. This is gonna stay for quite a few years, not just the COVID virus, but now you're gonna get into flu season, cold season, this season, that season. Who the heck knows what happens next year? So I think we need to start looking at that, so that we can provide for the public also to listen to our meetings, and not just say, well, we're not gonna do it.
I like to have meetings in person. I don't even go shopping yet, so I'm happy to listen online. I'm happy to call and have somebody put me on speaker. I don't, I'm not objecting to the group meeting in person, but I personally won't join you. No offense.
Well, we better continue the way we're going, because we can't do it both ways, I don't believe, Alicia.
Well, I can call somebody's cell phone and be put on speaker and participate that way. I don't have a problem with that. So really, I'm not going to vote, because, you know, I know what I'm gonna do either way.
Okay, well, think about it. We'll make a decision at our next board meeting. And the joint town-village board meeting that was supposed to be this month, it's, the town is doing their budget. They got a lot going on with union negotiations and everything. They will give us a new date for when they'll have the joint meeting. So it's not in September. We know that.
They're looking to do it December 9.
Okay, December 9. Okay, so we'll put that down for 12/9. Okay. Now, you meet in person, right?
We do.
Yeah. Well, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. Does anyone here?
It doesn't matter to me.
Okay. Well, we got till December 9. We'll all be over the virus. It's gonna be beautiful by then. Hopefully. Wish it was. What else have we got to worry about? Did anybody notice the new fence up at the water or at the redemption center?
I did. It's, it's an improvement.
I saw it earlier, and it looked pretty ugly, but they've put some kind of a backing on it now, I think.
That's what I saw, but you can still see through it. It's...
Yeah, but it was, this morning, it just, I thought it was gonna be more of a privacy fence than it is.
That's what I thought, too. Yes.
And they didn't do anything on that one end where they stored all that stuff. I, I don't know. I sent a text to Richard. I didn't hear back from him. It's not exactly what I thought it was gonna be.
I agree with you.
So, but it's a start. Does anyone on the line have anything for us?
Yes, this is Alan Heberling. I have a question. I understand that the town, this is Alan Heberling.
Okay.
I understand that the Office of the State Controller allows the village 60 days after the end of its fiscal year to file its AUD. I also understand that, that August 31st has come and gone, and that there was a new filing date that would be for the end of this month. Is that going on track to return?
That'll be done by October 1st.
Okay, do you know when that would be? Yes.
Yeah, the library one is all done. It's gone in. We'll go with ours. There was a lot of things. There's two ways to look at doing your AUD. Do it as everything is right on May 31st. Tina prefers to get everything cleaned up. We had this big water project, getting that cleaned up. Did the library. We did a lot of changes there. So the email that I had looking for an extension said 30 days, but they only offer 60 at the controller's office. So they're taking the full 60, and we'll have something by then. Be October 1st.
I have a question, Norma. I have a question. Did we get paid our pilot money from the hotel that was due August 31st?
No, it was due, it's due in September.
September? Okay. So by what date?
The month of September.
Okay, so anytime this month, they can hand it in?
Yeah, I would think so, yep. We did get, and Alicia found a letter. Did you send that letter to Megan to look at? This is for people that the past dues went out on water bills, but we have to offer them a payment plan or something if they can't make it. So I don't know how many, are there a lot of people left, Joanne?
No, there's really not too many, and I think...
And they had until the 22nd, right?
Well, this is for bills moving forward. So this will be for the November bills that go out.
No, I think we gotta offer to them for these that are gonna be slackers on the 22nd. We can look at the date of that letter, but we're gonna have to, they can't shut their water off, I don't think, by offering that plan.
No, we can't shut off their water. And when we do do the bills, if these same people are not, have not paid their bills, and it's due for the, them to go on the taxes, then we have to send them a letter, because we can't put it on their taxes either. So...
Yeah, so we'll have to keep that in mind.
Yep.
Do we have anything else, or anyone on the line that wants to ask the question? If not, can we have a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Michelle, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Nancy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right. Thanks, everybody.
Take care.